Thank you. I might just, that's a song called "My Shining Hour", dedicated to the board. And here's Clarissa.
Good morning, everyone. Wow, what a beautiful day, what beautiful smiling faces here, as well as livestream. We welcome everyone across the miles and right here on, in this beautiful, beautiful sanctuary. So please join me in our, oops, hold on. Where'd it go? Mission, sorry, got it. Please join us in our mission of who we are. We are a heart-centered, multi-generational, and diverse spiritual community, dedicated to teaching and practicing a positive life approach in our spiritual community. And our vision is: A world united in loving acceptance, celebrating inclusivity, harmony, prosperity, and awakened consciousness. Lighting the Christ candle symbolizes the oneness of God and the centering of all of us here. Please join me in prayer. Thank you, Mother, Father, God, for this beautiful day that you have given us, the beautiful season, the bright shiny skies, the trees revealing their splendor. Knowing that the seasons are changing, knowing that life changes, we are blessed to be here. We are blessed to be able to be together and listen to the words and music as it touches our hearts. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this community. In your name, amen. And now I'm going to ask the children to come forward. Talk about bright and shining faces. Look at these bright and shining faces. Here, I'm gonna have you hold this one more time because, all right, we're gonna rub our hands together, get all that energy going, and we're gonna bless these beautiful faces. We see the light of God surrounded in you.
We see the light of God surrounded in you.
And we are blessed to have you.
We are blessed to have you.
Go forth and have a great day. So it's, before you do your opening song, John, it's funny, back in the day in our old facility, we had ushers and greeters, and we had people that would bring the prayer box forward. And seeing those children today bring the prayer box forward, that really touches my heart. And I hope that they experience what I experienced then in carrying those prayers in that box and bringing it forth so that we know that all of us pray for everyone in that box. And now I turn it over to John.
So I think the music based on the service that we do and what it does spiritually, and where it comes from, and how it invigorates us and helps us, best I can do. So I don't think we've ever done this before, have we? Yeah, so it's an easy song. It's a Carmen Mosier song. So her melodies are pretty simple. So I think you can pick it up pretty quick, but I'll play the first eight for you. Work wonders from within. That's where we look within. Looking somewhere, where else for power that you need to win? Work wonders with within. Be sure you look within. Just take your mind from out of fears. Don't push too late begin. In you and me, the power to be. In you and me, there's power that will set us free. My course is up to me. Of course, it's up to me. I set my mind to use my power if wonders I want to see. Too good, a little too fast. The work we do make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children. The work we do make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children. May the dreams we dream make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children. May the dreams we dream make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children. May the songs we sing make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children. May the songs we sing make the world we live in a little more worthy of our children.
Thank you, John. That was awesome. So as many of you know, we have a publication in Unity that is our daily word, and it's been around for many, many years. I actually get a hard copy and an online copy, so it's with me every day. And I hope that it touches you each and every day. And today, I'm inviting Sue DeRouze to come up and read our daily word for the day.
Thank you. Sunday, October 16th, 2022. The word for the day is joy. I delight in simple joys. Joy, it has been said, comes much more from wanting what we have than from having what we want. Reflecting on this thought, I embrace the simple joys that the day offers. I enjoy my morning coffee and tea, savoring its flavor and fragrance. Walking through my neighborhood, I greet friends, smile at people I haven't yet met, and enjoy the fresh air. I find satisfaction in taking care of my home, working at my job, or helping a friend. Even if I am not with them today, I feel joy as I think of my connection with the people I care about most. I know joy whenever I look for possibilities rather than focusing on problems. My greatest joy is my awareness that wherever I am, whatever I'm doing, God is always with me. From Psalms 16:11, "You've shown me the path of life. In your presence there is fullness and joy, and in your right hand our pleasures forevermore." Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. So this begins our time of mindfulness, meditation, prayer. And before I start, I'm going to ring the singing bowl. Let the vibrations of that heart chakra lead you into this peaceful time as we start our meditation. Sit comfortably in your chair. Relax your shoulders. Take a few deep breaths. Letting go of the busyness of the day, of the outside world, monkey minds. Relax into this space, this sacred space. You can place your hands up for receiving or down for grounding as we move into this time of mindfulness, of inner prayer, of meditation. Breathing in, breathing out, releasing the past, drinking in the spirit of this moment. We pause to refresh in the presence of infinite love and in the light of illuminating wisdom. God is, and we are, here and now as we begin this period of prayer. I pause. I breathe. I enter a sanctuary of peace. Breathing out, I relax and release. Breathing in, I open my heart and mind. I trust. I lay down cares and concerns from a moment ago, just breathing them away. Take a deep breath in. Opening your heart. Release the breath and relax. Just breathing them away, our concerns. And in quiet peace, we pause for peace, for peace, for peace as we enter the sanctuary of peace. By faith, I perceive the true and real within every circumstance. Let me see through the eyes of faith the truth of divine power and presence at the core of every experience. By faith, I trust what I cannot see. As circumstances unfold, I remain faith-filled and faithful. I know good and only good now as well as in the days ahead. My faith, I perceive the truth and real within every circumstance. Centered in divine life, I flourish in every way. I acknowledge divine life, the eternal flame of ever-flowing vitality. No matter the season, no matter the story, I choose to live. I will not sit on the sidelines. I will not delay. I choose to jump into the fire of life to sparkle and shine. And centered in divine life, we flourish in every way. I am one with, and now realize, divine abundance. The good of God cannot be withheld. It pours over every detail of my life like a steady and gently flowing rain. With every breath, I draw upon divine abundance. Every need of mine is met with plenty, plenty of possibility, plenty of resources, plenty to love and celebrate. We are one with, and now realize, our divine abundance. I am at peace with all of humanity. My heart of compassion extends to the human family. Each face I see is the face of God. Every story tells my story, a message about hope and courage and overcoming. I am one with God and one with all in peace. We are at peace with all humanity. And now I invite you into a time of silent prayer as we go within, listening to the still, small voice speaking the words to us, answering our prayers that are unsaid because Mother, Father, God knows our prayers before we say them. And in this moment of silence, go into your heart center of peace. As we have centered ourselves in peace, in our sanctuary, in our center of heart, God-filled, we are grateful. I open this time now to speak aloud the names of those people or situations, to lift them up into prayer. And as we speak those words aloud, we know that they are shared. We know that they are given beyond, and our prayers are answered. I hold the prayer box, knowing that these prayers placed inside, these requests are surrounded by all of you in prayer as well. My sweet family in Tulsa and in Fort Worth. My dear friend Martha and Sue. Unity of Michiana. My sweet mama. All those suffering in illness and despair, we lift them up. I pray for this unity, community. Our South Bend community. Our world community. Reverend Sandy and Bill. Unity Board of Trustees. Musicians. Thank you, sweet Spirit, for being in our presence. Thank you, sweet Spirit, for this time of prayer. May this time of prayer unleash our spiritual potential so we support those with whom we've prayed and for everyone awakening to our divine identity. We unleash faith, awakening, abundance, love, wisdom, and strength. Renewed and empowered through this prayer, we contribute to the rising consciousness of harmony and peace. We are blessed, and we are blessed together. Amen.
I turn inside. Reveal my life. In here is cool air. Reveal, I'm aware. All my troubles fade away. All my worries gone to stay. All I feel is peace inside. All I feel is love inside. All my troubles fade away. All my worries gone to stay. All I feel is peace inside. All I feel is love inside.
This is my last song. This is my finding. If tomorrow I'll be gone, what do I wanna say? This is my last song. If it's my time to go, when my body's moved on, what will I have to show? Oh, but fortune and fame they spend it too low. The things that make a name just don't matter in the end. But is the sky a little more peaceful? Oceans and sky a little more blue? Is humankind a little bit wiser about the things that we can do? Does the sun shine a little?
And in this moment of silence, go into your heart center of peace. As we have centered ourselves in peace, in our sanctuary, in our center of heart, God-filled, we are grateful. I open this time now to speak aloud the names of those people or situations, to lift them up into prayer. And as we speak those words aloud, we know that they are shared. We know that they are given beyond, and our prayers are answered. I hold the prayer box, knowing that these prayers placed inside, these requests are surrounded by all of you in prayer as well. My sweet family in Tulsa and in Fort Worth. My dear friend Martha and Sue. Unity of Michiana. My sweet mama. All those suffering in illness and despair, we lift them up. I pray for this unity community. Our South Bend community. Our world community. Reverend Sandy and Bill. Unity Board of Trustees. Thank you, Sweet Spirit, for being in our presence. Thank you, Sweet Spirit, for this time of prayer. May this time of prayer unleash our spiritual potential so we support those with whom we've prayed and for everyone awakening to our divine identity. We unleash faith, awakening, abundance, love, wisdom, and strength. Renewed and empowered through this prayer, we contribute to the rising consciousness of harmony and peace. We are blessed, and we are blessed together. Amen.
All my troubles fade away. All my worries gone to stay. All I feel is peace inside. All I feel is love inside. All my troubles fade away. All my worries gone to stay. All I feel is peace inside. All I feel is love inside. This is my last song. This is my final day. If tomorrow I'll be gone, what do I want to say? This is my last song. If it's my time to go, when my body's moved on, what will I have to show? Oh, but fortune and things may seem a little old. The things that make you name just don't matter in the end. But is the sun a little more peaceful? Oceans and sky a little more blue? Is humankind a little bit wiser about the things that we can do? Has the sun shine a little bit brighter where before it was only rain? If so, then I'm glad I came. This is my last song. For all the love we're here. If all that I have ever dreamed is about to disappear. If these are my last words, there's nothing that I need to say. I have only tried to serve, never been about talking anyway. So much hurt there is to heal, it's hard to understand. All I can hope to feel is that I am doing the best I can. But is the world a little bit kinder? Oceans and sky a little more blue? Is humankind a little bit wiser about the things that we can do? Is the sun shine a little bit brighter where before there was only rain? If so, then I'm glad I came. Have I given hope to the hopeless? Has a hungry soul been fed? Has a child just a little bit taller because of something I have said? Have I felt a little bit of kindness? Have I eased a little bit of pain? If so, then I'm glad I came. If so, then I'm glad I came. This is my last song. What do I leave behind? What do I pass on if I'm out of time?
Thank you, John. Good morning, everyone. One more time. Good morning, everyone. There you go. All right, so as you know, Sandy's not here. She's actually on vacation. She's actually across the Big Pond. She will not be here next week either, but we have a very special service for you next week. But today, our board, your Board of Trustees, we are going to be sharing our talk. So each one of us are going to be up here today. And our talk title is Enlightenment and Engagement. However, I am going to share two other words that came to me as I was looking at Enlightenment and Engagement. I have this little, I don't know if you can see it at home. I had this little perpetual calendar, and it was given to me many, many, many years ago. And after I moved into my condo, it had been packed away, and I found it. So I pulled it out and I put it on next to my table where I have my coffee every morning. And I'm pretty good about changing it every day. Well, sat down on Saturday, okay, got to do my talk. And I went, oh, what's the word for today? And the word for today, the word for yesterday was create. And I'm like, oh, I like that. I'm sitting down to create, you know, to craft what I'm going to say. Like, I wonder what tomorrow says. So I flipped it over. So the way this works is, this is the day of the week, this is the month of the week. Sorry, this is the day of the week, this is the month of the week, and then this is the individual day. So today's word is inspire. So I'm changing my talk title to Enlightenment, Inspire, and Engage. So those were the words that kind of spoke to me. So each of your Board of Trustees members will be up here today. And I hope that you will be enlightened about who we are, what we do, and then that you will be inspired to engage in volunteering for a liaison supporting us as a board and our community and our fellow humans in the community and beyond. So here's a bit about a background as me as a Unity Board of Trustee. And I know I'm old, I know I tell stories a lot, multiple times. So if you've heard this, you can like get on your phone and listen to something else. I don't know, just kidding. So in February of 2020, the, at the annual meeting, the Board of Trustees was duly elected and installed. We held our very first meeting on March, on the second Thursday of March of 2020. And serving at that time was Tamara Ashley, Dr. Barbara Mylon, Sue Ann Sellers, Barb Zalinski, and myself. We gathered in the fellowship hall right out here. Reverend Sandy prayed us in. And that, when we, we do this every time we meet as a board, and it's a weather report. And a weather report is kind of a check-in. How you doing? Sharing concerns or joys personally. So we kind of come together and know each other a little bit better. So March of 2020, first meeting, I came to that meeting with a very, very heavy heart. A lot of fear of the unknown. And because this was my very first meeting as a Board of Trustee, but also I had had a phone call on that very day that a friend of mine was the first confirmed case of COVID in St. Joe County. That was like somebody took the rug out from underneath my feet. I had, that shook my world. I, I didn't know what was going to happen. I knew that it would have a lasting impact on everyone, especially on that particular board. And it also had COVID, and that whole transpire of what happened to us affected that board as well as this current board. So back in that, on that day in March of 2020, that was the very first time and the very last time that we met as a board for over two years. However, as you know, the rest of the story, amazing things have come about from that time of the pandemic. One of the biggest things, and again, I'm repeating myself. One of the biggest things is Kevin and Susan doing this fabulous livestream and all the equipment that we have. And now that you're joining us here at home, that's, that was huge. The board continued to meet regularly, monthly via Zoom. So that was new skills for all of us. I mean, who, who knew the word Zoom back then? So we kept, so as that board, we kept the doors open and the spirit moving. But church looked very different for us at that time, and it even looks different for us now. Here's a little bit of history about what previous board, how previous boards worked. Before the pandemic, board members would choose an established liaison. They would, they would think about it and figure out what liaison really fit for them. And they would choose that in order to lead and engage the conversation, the congregation to volunteer. But of course, in 2020, none of those activities or functions that came under those liaisons could be done, or it had to evolve because of the pandemic. That liaison back in 2020 and until now was kind of put aside. And we just worked on figuring out our new normal. We did some amazing work, but it was figuring out the new normal. Now I'm going to fast forward to today. Liaison positions are back. Each one of us on your current day board, led by spirit, agreed to champion a liaison for the betterment of Unity of Michiana and our community worldwide. You will hear from each of your board members as they share their enlightenment and engagement surrounding their particular liaison. So then you say, so what's a liaison? And who, who are these people and how do they do this? So there are six developed categories of liaisons. And they are hospitality, fellowship, and goodwill, led by me; buildings and grounds, led by Timothy Simpson; education, led by Sue Ellen Peters; financial, led by Dr. Barbara Mylon; outreach, led by Tamara Ashley; and worship services, led by Reverend Sandy. So I'm up first. I have hospitality, fellowship, and goodwill. And under each liaison, we have different focuses. And the four areas of focus under my liaison is greeters and ushers, fellowship, special events, and sunshine team. So Sue, would you please join me? I go back to that 2020 and the pandemic. This is Sue DeRus, and I want you all to see this beautiful spirit, this smiling face. She shows up every Sunday and greets everyone walking in the door with a beautiful smile, an open heart, with hugs and welcoming. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Back in the day, when I had ushers and greeters at our previous location, I had my ushers and greeters on a spreadsheet, and it was, it was a lot of work. We're simplified now, but I think that our hearts are large. And I'm, I'm so grateful for Sue to step into that. So the next one I'm going to talk about is sunshine team. So the sunshine team sends out cards for birthdays, get well, thank yous, and more. And that current team is comprised of Tamara Ashley, Sue Ellen Peters, and Susan Zuck. And I want to thank those ladies for all the sunshine that you give to our community. It's very appreciated. The, what the third focus is social events, and that's for adult fellowship get-togethers and fun activities. And then the last one I want to talk about is fellowship. So fellowship has been the most evolving part of my liaison, partly due to the pandemic. And I don't know if you've noticed, we've recently resumed fellowship in the church, in the, after church. But it's different. It's, 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 it's a different version from previous years and even from our previous location. The volunteers for this particular focus set up prior to the church service and clean up after the church service, giving each and every one of you a little time to engage and, and fellowship after church. The fellowship team also plans and does events like picnics, potlucks, and other fun events. So what is my ask today? I have an ask, because remember, it was enlightenment and engagement. So this is where the part comes in for all of you, and even at home. So my ask today is, how can you support the Unity Fellowship? Via time, donations, talents, muscle? I've had some muscle on some events before. So I ask you to sign up for fellowship after church, especially for the weekly setup and cleanup. There are signup lists in the back in the fellowship hall, or you can see me after church, or contact me by phone or email. That's the fellowship liaison. And now you're going to hear from all the rest of the board. And we are going to start with Timothy Simpson, and he is going to talk about Buildings and Grounds. Tim.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to Unity. My name is Timothy Simpson, and I am your treasurer. My liaisonship, if that is correct, is building and grounds. My responsibilities are help to make sure that the, the building is taken care of. We do have a lawn care service that takes care of the major mowing areas on that particular set. That's, we're all set on that. But we are going to need some help with the building. We've been in here for three years now, everybody knows that. Mary Lou has noticed some loose siding on the side of the building that needs to be addressed. I noticed a couple of weeks ago, when it was raining outside here, that the, the rain gutters are not functioning properly, so we're going to be taking a look at that. If there's anything that you guys have noticed that needs some attention, I won't be here. I have to leave early after service. But Susan has agreed to take any information or concerns that you might have regarding the building. She will be glad to, to help out with that. You can also, online, you can drop her an email or otherwise as well. The importance of our community, that we work together to maintain our sanctuary, our peacefulness, our, our harmony, is one thing that, that I think we get out of this, out of pitching in and helping when we can, where we can, and how we can. We are all part of our, of our own spiritual community, and it's what we do here that helps us take it out into the world on a day-to-day, daily basis. Please give of your time, when and where you can, of your talent, when and where you can. And of course, your finance, financial givings make a tremendous difference all the way around. This all adds up to our message of peace and love to the world. It really does. We don't have an exact date on the fall cleanup, and what, we do know that we're going to be addressing some issues with the building. We are going to do some, some cleanup real close to the building. We're going to do a little bit of raking and stuff like that. So we don't have the exact date yet because we're kind of waiting to see when the leaves actually fall and when the cleanup becomes most necessary. But it will be in the next few weeks. I'm guessing either maybe October 31st or maybe the first, the next weekend after that in November. Again, your suggestions are welcome and appreciated. It's a small commitment. We're only going to do, I would say, most everything can be done in between 30 and 45 minutes, believe it or not. We'll do it right after service, so about 11:15, between 11 and 15, 11:15 and 11:30, we'll get started. Start making preparations for winter. It's coming. Those don't, those types of, of help, of help, they're simple but very necessary. And anything you can do is truly appreciated. Also, the word of the day is joy. And I can see that that would be a great time for fellowship and joy. So, and there will be snacks. So anybody who can come, pitch in, we sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for all the work that you do for Buildings and Grounds and your service on the board. It's appreciated. And now I'm going to introduce Ms. Sue Ellen Peters, and she's going to talk about how smart we are.
And yeah, Tim, talking about winter, if you listen to WNDU, there's a first alert weather day tomorrow, which you know how they always hype that up a little more than it, it sounds. But with possible rain mixing with a little bit of that S-word and some blustery winds, so. But this is a beautiful day, and we would never believe it right now, would we, anyway? You know, I noticed Chrissy using a phrase at one point, "back in the day." Well, and it makes me, I got a couple of years on her. It makes me think of, when Terry and I are sometimes talking about how wonderful childhood was for us as compared to what it was for our kids. You know, we could leave on a summer morning when we were on break, ride our bikes all over town, do whatever, come home, show up for lunch, go out again, come home, show up for dinner, because you know, you never missed a meal, and then go out and play until dark. That was the rule. And you know, nobody cautioned us constantly about being kidnapped or being molested in any way, or are we using drugs? What are we doing? It just was a, maybe I was a sheltered kid. I think I was a pretty typical kid. But it was a really carefree seeming to me. Maybe that's just what being a kid means. Because now as I look at what it's like to be a kid today, it seems more complicated and a little more fraught with concerns. I was talking to Mary Lou one time, and she said when she was seven, they lived over in Mishawaka, right, Mary Lou? But her mother would let her go on the bus. And it didn't seem to be lack of caring, because Mary Lou's mother loved her very much, but let her go on the bus into South Bend and all over the place, and she was only seven. So I, I think I So I, I, I think I look back to those values, which were wonderful, and recognize though that we change with the times, and that's part of what working with our youth here is involved. I have said to Terry, boy, I'm glad we didn't have a pandemic when we were raising our kids, because just the complications that parents, single parents, double parents, working parents, you know, had to face with getting kids to school and teaching kids about all the new things, so I celebrate my own past and recognize that we move and change with the time. And one of the things I think is that kids face so many choices. You know, when I was a kid, we went to church on Sunday morning, what else would we do? The family had one car, so nobody was driving around, all the stores in Nappany were closed, so where would you go, you know? There was nothing on TV, TV only had three channels, you know, and nothing really on Sunday mornings, so, you know, it's kind of what the family did. But now I recognize when kids show up here, their parents bring them, they show up, we show up, we're making a conscious choice because there's a lot that the world has to, TV used to sign off at midnight. Matthew, my son, doesn't even start his day until midnight, you know, he's up all night doing whatever, and John maybe too, out in the world, you know, making music, so it's, when we come here, it's by conscious choice, it's by dedication and choice. And I, I think that's why the role that we have to educate our youth is so vital today. You know, we play such an important part when these young minds and bodies and spirits come to us to participate in what we do, you know, that's, that's our way to change the world. You know, I think about Donalyn Martin only because she was here for 30 years, she was here when I came, for 30 years, and it's kind of like throwing a stone into a pond and the ripples go out. You know, when you work with kids, you never know where those ripples are going and who they're going to touch. So I just, you know, I just feel very passionate about how important this is. Because I think, you know, with the spiritual tools that we offer here, we give our kids the skills and, and spirituality and self-belief to step out as confident young adults who are ready to bring some new values to the world, which we really need. Okay, so how did I, how did I choose to work with the education liaison? Well, some of you know, maybe some of you don't know, that I was a first grade teacher for seven years. I got a BS in education from Ball State, and I was a teacher, and then I evolved into my current career with other degrees, and I'm a retired psychologist now, most of you know that, but within that path, I also taught college. So, you know, I've taught kind of first grade from college, and really, education and teaching and all that, that's just play to me, that's just how I have fun, you know, so I, I think we know that already with all my books and classes, so that's how I, you know, was drawn to the education liaisonship. Now let me tell you by happy accident, it happened to be the easiest liaisonship, and I didn't choose it for that reason, but wasn't I kind of lucky in that? And I'll tell you why it was the easiest in a minute, but I am going to just re, it also has one of the shortest descriptions, so there you go. I am the youth education liaison, and youth education goes all the way from young primary kids all the way up through the YOu and high school. And our teachers are Martha, Patty, and Brandy, you've seen them. One good thing about this liaisonship, you see the kids every Sunday and you see them out there, so I don't have to tell you lots about that. But my responsibilities are to communicate regularly with the youth ed program coordinator, which is Martha McLaughlin, to support and help with the youth programs, to review safety policies with the program coordinator and keep up to date. And that's one of the tasks that Martha and I are working on at this point. She, we talked about this earlier, and she said rightfully and understandably so, that until the fly-up was done a couple of weeks ago, that's where her energies needed to be, but now we're ready to focus on updating that educational and safety, safety policy, which hasn't been changed since we moved into this building, you know, and a lot changes all the time, so Martha and I are going to sit down and do that, and if any of the rest of you have ever worked with that, or you have ideas about that that really pop out for you, please feel free to tell me. We're really very open for input. Okay, so that's my short description. Why is it the easiest liaisonship? Because we have people here who are of stellar dedication and quality and creative, and they just, you know, Chrissy said something that her liaisonship was led by, or something or other, I don't remember how you said it, but I'm here to tell you that my, I am led by the education team because they are just so impeccable in what they do, what they give, and how they prepare, how they show up. So, you know, I just feel kind of, you know, like a, I, I, they don't need me, and that's great, I don't need to be needed, but they're wonderful, and it's so easy. Okay, so I said that. You know, I, I just love John's, I love that song, "Made the world we live in and the work we do make the world more worthy for our children," because, you know, our children are always watching us, we don't even maybe recognize that or know it, but they are. And especially the people who step up to work with the youth are so important because they are really modeling who we are, and so it's, it's very important. The other side of people making things look too easy, quote unquote, is that it's easy to kind of assume they've got it all, they're prepared, they're energetic and conscientious, which they are, but we might recognize that there could be some burnout and some need for some help in that. You know, just because you're perfect doesn't mean you don't need some help sometimes. So I talked with Martha, and I asked her whether there were any specifics and things coming up that she could ask for, and she's like, well, she didn't know, you know, and I even prodded her, I said, well, maybe some ideas like preparing refreshments for the kids occasionally, or making craft materials at home. You know, Patty comes in here every Saturday afternoon and sets up all the material for what she's going to do with the kids the next day. So that is one thing that happens that's very invisible, but, so I was trying to help Martha think of some things, and she's like, well, she said, we just, you know, just to have people to help, and she, but she did like, kind of like my idea about somebody could provide refreshments occasionally, so anyway. So I ask you to respond in any way that you can when the youth directors ask for help, because, you know, some of it's working with kids behind the scenes, you know, if you're like me, you may not be able to, feel not able to leap water balloons in the parking lot at a single bound or whatever, but you don't have to be, you know, as heavily involved with the kids physically and athletically, there are many ways that you could help. Just want you to be open to that. Aside from the safety plan, which Martha and I will do, I, a big, big event upcoming, probably now when the weather's better in the spring, is moving, claiming, moving the pod, setting it all up, which Tim has just been unbelievably, there are so many specs and regulations from the state, we have to go through the state because we're not in the South Bend city limit, setting all that up and how it can be wired and positioned, and you've got to fill out all these papers, and you've got to go to all these meetings. I mean, he has just been a hard-working angel, and he and Alex have already put in a lot of sweat equity for the pod. But when the kids are ready to move in, in the spring, I think, you know, that needs to be a church-wide celebration because we're going to claim another beautiful space. And I know Mary Lou, I bring Mary Lou to church in the morning, and she used to say every morning when we drove in and she saw that pod sitting over there, that those doors really needed to be painted, and I know that they will. So some of the things that you might be asked to do in the spring is helping with painting, cleaning, moving things, maybe you have in a spare room or an attic, a lovely rocking chair and a homey rug that you could bring, because, you know, we want to make this space really homey and beautiful for the kids. So many opportunities will abound in the spring, including, I'm sure, my master worker isn't here right now, but whether he feels able and comfortable to turn painting doors over to somebody with some skills, or whether he will do it, but those doors will be painted by God, Mary Lou, even if it's by God. Okay. So the signup sheet for working with the kids is not broken down into specifics, but please sign up if you're open to being called and participating and being asked to work with the kids. So, and people watching online, I checked this out with Susan before the service, I said, Susan, can I tell them to call you if they, if you want to sign up and be a part of not only this liaisonship, but any of them? And she said, yes, you certainly can do that by phone. Sometimes if she's not in office hours, there's a voicemail, you can leave voicemail, there's email and a contact sheet, both of which are on our website, so you can do that too. So I just want to leave you with one quote from Henry Blake, you know, those of you who know, I watch MASH all the time, he was from MASH, and at one point, a bunch of orphans had descended upon the MASH compound because they needed tetanus shots or whatever, and Henry Blake was saying, well, I love children, I was once a former child myself. And so you know, all of us here, we're once a former child ourselves, and that qualifies each and every one of you to, to work with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue Ellen, and you bring out the children in all of us. Okay, last two, I, we're going, these, these two board members are joining us by video, and financial first will be Dr. Barbara Mylan and outreach by Tamara Ashley.
Hello, my name is Dr. Barbara Mylan. I am a member of the Board of Trustees from Unity Michiana, and I serve on the Finance Committee. Unity's Finance Committee is responsible for financial analysis. We provide advice, we are responsible for the oversight of the organization, and to ensure that Unity has the resources that it needs to serve its spiritual community. We invite you to consider becoming a volunteer member of Unity's Finance Committee. We have begun the planning stages for a fundraiser for Unity. We had hoped to start the walk, the fundraiser this year, but because I relocated to St. Louis, Missouri, we have postponed getting that fundraiser off the ground. I would like to invite you to consider volunteering on the Finance Committee, and it would be wonderful to have someone who could work with us on the fundraiser, the Body, Mind, Soul Walk. We know that the Body, Mind, and Soul is very important. The Body, Mind, and Soul is a system, it is a system of energy, and we connect to keep the energy flowing with us, we can do that through exercise, we can do that through good posture, we can do that in a number of ways. So please consider becoming a member of the Finance Committee and to participate on the committee for planning our first fundraiser, the Unity Michiana Body, Mind, Soul Walk. Thank you for your attention.
Good blessed morning to you. I'm Tamara Ashley. I am currently the President of your Board of Trustees. At the beginning of each calendar year, the trustees volunteer to support a particular liaison after careful, prayerful discernment. Today, you learn all about each of the liaisons in detail, as each trustee spoke to you, and how you can lend your time and your talents to Unity of Michiana. You'll notice that some of the responsibilities overlap, and that's good, because then that will continue to strengthen our bond by working together. My particular liaison is outreach. I am responsible for advertising, marketing, public relations. The function of that team is creating plans for advertising, marketing, social media for the church, and for press releases. Another team is connecting with the outside community, such as spiritual religious groups and our service groups. A third team is community service projects, where we would be creating and implementing community service projects. A fourth team is church growth, where we would develop ideas for increasing membership, Friendship Sunday, for example, welcoming new visitors and so forth. And last but not least, contacting or connecting with congregants. Currently, our Board of Trustees contacts each of our congregants by phone annually. We'd like to increase that to quarterly. We are on Facebook Live each week, followed up by YouTube, we have a fresh new website, and our weekly e-newsletter with the larger print, yay, has been updated as well. Right now, we're in negotiations with a Girl Scout troop who have asked to use our facility twice a month for their meetings. If that comes to pass, the collaboration has great potential to become a bridge for future community service projects, particularly for our youth. Last Sunday, Reverend Sandy's talk focused on the third anniversary of our new building, and she detailed a history of Unity of Michiana in South Bend and how we have moved forward through time. I have a few pluses to add to Reverend Sandy's story. Now that we're able to meet in person, we have been experiencing a growing congregation. Our online audience has expanded as well. Our youth attendees have practically tripled. Through the worst of the pandemic, when I was watching, there were two youth on the platform, and now when I look, the whole platform is full of youth. How wonderful. They are such a blessing, and they are our future. Another plus is that we have been financially stable for several years, and that we outright own the church property, there is no mortgage, and we have maintained a financial year-end balance in the ballpark of $90,000 to $100,000 for the last several years as well. Now, here's the part where I need your help. I would like to form an outreach committee to brainstorm which direction we should be going, are we currently doing the right thing? I'd like to assign an order of importance to each team, and of course, to implement ideas. We may end up having a brainstorming committee, which then breaks up into teams for each of those initiatives. To start, I envision meeting by Zoom. Susan has signup sheets ready for you in the back. I do look forward to working with you, and I want to thank you for being here. We are your living spiritual community. Your ideas and your talents are our treasure and will enrich Unity of Michiana. Thank you.
Conclusion of the talk title, Enlightenment and Engagement, and I hope that now you know a little bit more about who we are, what we do, and how you can become engaged with us. So thank you. So now I'm going to share our happenings and events for this week, and we don't have much going on because Reverend Sandy's gone, the Wednesday Zoom group will not meet this week, and it will resume the following on Wednesday, October 26th. And don't forget to join us after service in the fellowship hall for a little fellowship. And so now it's our time for offering. And as you know, you may give a tithe by going to our website and clicking on the yellow donate button, or by using our wonderful phone app. There's also a basket in the back of the sanctuary where you can place your offering, and you, we all, all of you are the sole, S-O-L-E, and soul, S-O-U-L, funding for our Unity of Michiana. So I invite you now to join me in the offertory for the affirmation. God's abundance flows freely through me. With a grateful heart, I give and receive with confidence and delight. Thank you, sweet Spirit, for the gifts and abundance that you provide for this Unity of Michiana and for each and every one of us. We receive this with love and blessing. Amen. And now if you'll join me in our prayer for peace song and the prayer for protection.
Let there be peace on earth, and let it be.
Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, a peace that was meant to be. With God as our protector, family all are we. Let us walk with each other in perfect harmony. Let peace begin with me, let this be our moment now. With every step I take, let this be our solemn vow. To take each moment and live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me.
And our prayer for protection. Light of God surrounds us, the love of God infolds us, the power of God protects us, the presence of God watches over us. Wherever we are, God is, and all is well. And so it is. Have a great week.[1495.73]